Good evening, everyone. So I will call the regular meeting of the Melpita City Council on November 19, 2024 to order. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. The city council meeting is available for instant translation in over 50 languages with Wordly. It is an app. It's accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays. So by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner, you can access that translation. So back to today's business, city clerk Gazetta, please take the roll call.
Councilmember Barbara Dio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Leanne.
Here.
Councilmember Fan.
Present.
Mayor Montano.
And I am here. Okay, thank you for that. And now let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Rise, everyone. You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Make me seated. We also have invocation. And today, the invocation is our Vice Mayor, Evelyn Chua. Going to be giving the invocation for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does it work? Did you turn it on? So in the interim, I just wanted to, you probably saw a bunch of folks downstairs. That was a sister city of Dagupan, Philippines. So they had, we had a ceremony for them. And they are here all week, and they're visiting different sites, learning from different, the school district, the city of Melpitas, and different organizations. So that's why they were here this evening. And we're very fortunate to have a sister city of Dagupan, Philippines. So are you ready?
Ready. Okay, thank you. I have my notes, but bless this dais for all the council members here. Bring us a bright, clear mind and knowledge and understanding of all the items that we have tonight. Also bless our leaders from the city, the county, the state, and the federal level. Bless them with the knowledge and wisdom to make the right decision for everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that beautiful invocation. And so now, so for proclamations, today, we will be proclaiming Nurse Practitioner Week and Small Business Saturday. So councilmembers, if you would join me at the dais, at the podium, I mean. So again, good evening, everyone. So this week is Nurse Practitioner Week, November 10th through 16th, 2024. Today, we honor nurse practitioners who are the backbone of high-quality health care. They diagnose, treat, and promote wellness across diverse settings, from hospitals to schools. The role is vital, especially in underserved communities, ensuring timely and effective care. So this week, November 10th through 16th, is National Nurse Practitioner Week, and we celebrate their invaluable contributions. So on behalf of the city of Melpitas, we thank them for enhancing the health and well-being of our community. So join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Melpita City Council in proclaiming the week of November 10th through 16th, 2024, as Nurse Practitioner Week in the city of Melpitas. And we also have Victoria Ley, a member of the California Association of Nurse Practitioners, who would please come up and accept this proclamation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Lee. I'm a nurse practitioner. Currently, I'm working at Sutter Palo Alto Medical Foundation in primary care. I just want to thank the city of Melpitas for this proclamation today and for recognizing Nurse Practitioner Week. So today, I'm representing Silicon Valley Chapter, CAMP, so California Association of Nurse Practitioners. We have over 112 members and even 12 students. So we cover most of Santa Clara County. So nurse practitioners, our main goal is to provide compassionate care. We want to increase access to all patients. And so I'm really thankful today for this proclamation. And I hope this inspires everyone to have more conversations about the value that nurse practitioners provide to health care. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much for that. And next, we have Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2024. Today, we recognize the vital role of small businesses in Melpitas. Small businesses create jobs, boost our economy, and strengthen our community. With $0.68 to every dollar spent staying local, Small Business Saturday on November 30th encourages us to shop and dine locally, supporting our entrepreneurs during the holiday season and beyond. So let's celebrate the contributions of these businesses by helping them thrive, ensuring a vibrant Melpitas for everyone. Join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Melpita City Council in proclaiming November 30th as Small Business Saturday in the city of Melpitas. And we have our Economic Development Director, Alex Andrade, who will be accepting this, since he's the one that makes sure that we have a vital business stream in Melpitas. Thank you.
A small business person.
Who is it?
A small business person in Melpitas. Come on up. Come on up. His office is right here.
Oh, Dexter, yeah, if you have a small business, but there's probably other people that have small businesses as well. So we want to give you. Yeah, but first, come on up. Both of you will take a picture first, and then we will give you guys the mic. Let's take a picture. You're supposed to be over here. Get over here. You're supposed to be right here. Yeah, because you're this. All right. And now I want you, first let's have Dexter, and then you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dexter.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the city for giving us this proclamation. As you know, the hard blood of America's businesses is the small businesses. Majority of the small businesses is what makes us employ the people of the city of Melpitas. So I'm really grateful for the support of the city and would like to continue to get support from the city, because it's really hard for small business to do business now with all the regulation, the taxes, and what other rules and regulations that the federal and the state has given us. So giving us the support from the city is very welcome to us. Thank you very much for helping us survive in this very tough environment that we have now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Andrade. I'm the Director of Economic Development and Strategic Initiatives. Does anybody know how many brick-and-mortar small businesses we have in Melpitas? Yeah? Any guesses? So we have a total of over 6,000 business licenses, and we have somewhere plus-minus around 4,000 brick-and-mortar businesses. These businesses are absolutely critical to our local economy. About 77% of our local businesses are microenterprise businesses. That's defined as one to five employees. So please, please shop local. It's incredibly important for us for long-term fiscal sustainability for the city. You'd be surprised if you shop local for $1 that you spend on a taxable item, the city receives about a penny. And at the end of the year, that could be upwards of $30 million. So please shop local. The holidays are right around the corner. Shop Local Saturday, or Small Business Saturday, happens on November 30th. So please visit our local businesses. Thank you.
For that, that was really beautiful. So now we are going to be going on to public forum. So members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. Public forum will be limited to three minutes. So city clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, I have two cards. The first is Michael Tsai, the second is Voltaire Montemayor.
Michael Tsai, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Michael Tsai. Served as a Melpita School Board member and formerly a city council candidate. But before all that, tonight's a really special night, and that's why I'm wearing the Philippines hat. My first position with Melpitas was as the Commissioner for the Sister Cities Program with Melpitas and Dagupan way back when. And I still remember those meetings, and it's great to see how much both cities have evolved and grown over the last eight years. And I think there's a lot of progress that's been made, and still more progress to be made. And I look forward to supporting all those efforts. We used to do student exchange programs between the schools. That was great. I think there's more we can do. Secondly, I do want to congratulate Mayor Montano and Vice Mayor Chua for winning reelection to another term. We both ran clean, strong campaigns, and that's what it's all about in a democracy. So congratulations. And finally, this may come as a bit of a surprise, but I was reflecting back on the last eight years. We've all been through a lot. I still remember one of the earliest conversations I had with Councilmember Fan from before either of us ever took office. I still remember his words from about eight years ago, and he said, "Michael, you know, no matter what happens, right? You know, once I get in there, I need to be held accountable, just like every other leader." And I think it took a lot of integrity to say that and to stick to those principles. And on that note, I do want to thank Councilmember Fan for, you know, occasionally having the courage to say the right thing. He said to me recently that, you know, no one's perfect and made some mistakes. And he admitted that he took some actions that maybe, looking back, he wishes he did differently. And that's all right. I think all of us could say the same sometimes. He said he was kind of misled by another council member. I'm not going to name. But the point is, none of us are going to be in office forever. And I really think it's about the legacy that we all leave. What we say and do before, during, and after we leave office. And I think that's what we're all going to be judged by at the end of the day. And again, to everyone who's serving here for the right reasons, elected or unelected, you know, I hope you do well. And I'm always here to support what's right for Melpitas. And I do want to address, yes, there were rumors going around that I was going to run for city council this time. And the truth is, I did pull papers. I pulled out at the last minute because there was a state legislative issue going on that would have affected Melpitas. So I pulled out to fight for Melpitas at the state level, and I can talk more about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, and thank you for those words of wisdom. Again, thank you. And now we have Mr. Montemayor. Come on up.
Hello, everybody. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Staff, or member of the city council also. I scribbled my topic, but I don't know, it was two pens. Anyway, nurse practitioners, our families, a family of nurses, my sister, my brother, relatives, cousins. And the Philippines is a country of nurses. And when it comes to small businesses, I finished my studies because of the small business of my mother. When I am at home, I am the manual calculator. Anyway, it's easy. Subtraction, addition only, most of them. So I'm good with addition and subtraction. Yeah, as a previous speaker, yeah, thank you. I swam through a great big waves also. The part of the waves is in front of me, Mayor, the council member Honin, and council member Anthony Fan. So, yeah, I am proud. As people were saying, you got that must vote. We underestimated you, some people say, but still, a lot of comments, positive but negative comments. For me now, though, I'm thinking, I'm not forgetting Melpitas. I promised last time. Previously, this time, not to run, but I ran. Anyway, I thought that's a good start by a choke. I struggled somewhere. So anyway, is it acceptance speech already? But anyway, acceptance of not making it. As I said, I reached the finish line, but not so of that good score. So let's be good to each other. Let's have unity. Let's make Melpitas great all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor, for coming out here and, you know, sharing your thoughts and to wish us all to get along. Thank you. Now we're moving on to the announcement of the conflict. Oh, actually, now we're moving on to the public forum. So, oh, actually, we already did that. We already did. Okay, I did check that. Now, announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions.
Thank you, Mayor. Ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbara Dio.
None.
Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Councilmember Fan. Mayor Montano.
And I am none.
Thank you.
Thank you. I ask the mayor and the members of the Melpita City Council to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from the development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbara Dio.
None.
Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Councilmember Fan.
None.
Mayor Montano.
And I am none.
Thank you. Let the record reflect no reported conflicts.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we will move on to the Melpita City Council Code of Conduct. And I will read it. Be respectful and courteous. Words, tone, and body language do matter. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy and issues. And respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you. And so now moving on to the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes before we make any motions? We have Vice Mayor Chua. Seeing none, so move. So we have a, it was moved by Vice Mayor Chua and seconded by Councilmember Leanne. Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbara Dio.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Thank you for that. And so now moving on to the consent calendar. So staff, do you have any comments? We have City Manager Ned Thomas.
No additional comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the council that wants to make any comments? Let's see. I didn't see any. Oh, we have Councilmember Barbara Dio.
For advisement, I would like to pull out C-20.
C-20? Okay.
For some disclosures, and I deferred to the city attorney thereafter and deferred to the council for any discussion that they wish.
Okay, and just for the audience, C-20 involves, consider one donation request from the Knights of Columbus. So that's the item. And we have.
If I may, what the council can do is to vote on the bulk of the consent calendar as one action, and then have a separate vote on that item, which I think is what's being proposed as an administrative motion.
Okay.
Or administrative request.
Okay, before that, we have Vice Mayor Chua.
I'll move with the exception of C-20.
A second?
I, yeah, I have some remarks on item C-11. I can either pull it or just make the remarks. It's up to you guys.
So I think we should, since we'll do C-20 and then we'll do C-11 after we approve the consent calendar. Would that be okay? Or do you want to?
Can we do C-11 prior to that?
Want to do that?
Because we have, you know, folks in the audience.
Okay, we'll do that.
So the motion is amended with C-11 to be discussed and C-20 to be pulled.
All right, so we're going to go. Is there a second? Okay. We do need public comment for this. So anybody from the public want to make any comments on this? Go ahead, Montemayor.
The C-20 is being pulled out, but I think in one motion is automatic, right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, so we will go ahead and vote for the.
So Mayor, I do want to clarify the motion. So the request I heard from Councilmember Barbara Dio was to separate the vote for C-20, not to pull it for discussion. What I heard from Councilmember Fan was that he did have some comments he wanted to make on the content of that. And so to pull that one from the, sorry, C-11, C-11 from Councilmember Fan. So the vote then would be on the bulk of the calendar without C-11 and C-20. You could then take another vote on C-20 with Councilmember Barbara Dio making whatever disclosure he wants on that. And then C-11 would be taken at the time of discussion.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and vote up for the bulk of that one.
So for C-11, Councilmember Fan wanted to make a comment just for that item. He didn't ask to pull that. ask to pull that for discussion. So we can vote on the rest of the items for the consent calendar, but then discuss C-11 immediately after, because we have our fires that needs to leave.
Correct. The calendar can be taken in any order. The mayor has control over the ordering of the calendar. So if that's, if that administrative request is honored, then you can take, you can take the bulk of the calendar, and then C-11, and then C-20.
Got it. Thank you. We'll do that. Okay. Councilmember Barbara Dio?
So, City Attorney, can you clarify C-20? Is it pulled out? Is it going to be voted on, except me, together with what Vice Mayor has indicated about C-20?
So my understanding of the request on C-20 was to have a separate vote on that for approval, to keep it on, keep all items remaining on the consent calendar, but to take three separate votes for them.
Is that, is that what you wanted, Councilmember Barbara Dio? Okay, we have Vice Mayor Chua.
I still, I need a clarification from the city attorney. Why, why 20 is being pulled? Can you please clarify that? Thank you.
My understanding from what Councilmember Barbara Dio said was that he wants to make a disclosure that may be a disclosure that requires him to recuse himself from the vote on that item. So the vote for the majority of the consent calendar, which he believes he can participate in, he wants to be present for, taking it separately allows for that vote to go forward while he recuses himself and steps off the dais. That's what I understand the request to be for.
The rest of the items, pull C-20, comment on C-11 based on Councilmember Fan's request, and then vote on C-20 after. Is that clear with you?
Correct. You could take comment, you could take these as, there's lots of different ways you can do this. One way-
I'm just asking the way I describe it.
If people just want to make a comment, then you could take the majority of the calendar, including C-11, and just make comments about C-11 now before it's taken for public comment before approval.
I think, Mayor, if we, can we just take a comment on C-11, then we can do the approval for the rest except for C-20. Make it simpler.
We're making it more complicated than what it is. So, so C-11, we're going to go ahead and-
Go ahead.
Councilmember Fan, we're gonna just discuss C-11.
I promise I'm not gonna go into a robust deliberation or anything. I wanted to pull this and set aside a little bit of time to make sure that our firefighters get the recognition for their selfless service. You know, I stand, or I sit here on the dais before you with tremendous gratitude and deep respect for the incredible men and women of your department, whose heroism and dedication have been a true lifeline to our community. And you are not just the first to respond when danger strikes, you're our true heroes. And I've, I for one have never forgotten your sacrifices. And during the pandemic, while many of us were sheltering at home, you were out there every single day, leading our community's COVID response, setting up testing sites, leading our community and keeping us safe when it mattered the most. You guys didn't just battle fires, you battled an invisible enemy that threatened the lives of everyone in Milpitas. And you did it without hesitation. When times got tough and the economy got rough, our firefighters, you showed the true meaning of public service. And I'm still inspired to this day by it. I talk about it to, you know, my peers in other cities all the time about how, you know, you stepped up when we needed it the most. You took voluntary pay cuts. You knew that your sacrifices would protect the city and ensure that essential services would continue. And that's the kind of selflessness, that commitment to our community that I personally will never forget. I'm saying this as I near the end of my term, and these are words that I wanted to be said. As someone who has always prioritized public safety, approving this contract tonight is a decision that I make with pride. And it's a recognition of your service, your sacrifices, and your unwavering commitment to keeping Milpitas safe. So to the men and women of the Milpitas Fire Department, your heroism is not just something we see in times of crisis. It's something that we live with every day. And you are the heart of the city, and I am so proud to stand with you always. So thank you. Let's give our Milpitas firefighters a round of applause.
Thank you, Councilmember Fan. And with that, what I would also like to congratulate the IAFF Executive Board Negotiating Team, that is President Gabe Borland, Vice President Gerald Hardy, Mario Benner, Daniel Lee, and Kinaan Wolf. Thank you so much for negotiate, under negotiations. I know some of those negotiations are pretty tough, but thank you very much. And also from the city negotiation team is HR Director Kelly Armley, Finance Director Luz Corfresi-Hau, and any outside council was Rick Bolano. So thank you all of those to making this thing work, for the negotiations. Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work that you do in our city. So we commend you for that. I'd like council members, if you'd like to say, each one, would like to say something to the firefighters.
As you know, I've been out there for the last few months, out there in our city. And on behalf of the residents of Milpitas, the businesses, the staff, and us council members, thank you. Heartfelt thank you for your services to our city. Thank you so much.
Well, everyone's saying so much already. I don't want to add it on, but I do want to let you know that I want you to know that your contributions are highly valued and respect, respected. Thank you for your service and for being our heroes in Milpitas. Thank you.
Just a testimony that my family has been recipient for your heroism, at least twice or three times, emergency services were called, and as always reliable and it saved lives. So we, the city, will continue to work with you, bringing the city safer, more safe, and be responsive to medical emergencies. You are assured of our support. Thank you.
Thank you for all your comments, and thank you firefighters for all your hard work in the city of Milpitas. Thank you very much. So now, is there any, did, did one of the, did the president want to come and say something, Mr. Bol, Mr. Gabe Borland? Well, actually, I can't, he can't speak right now. So first, I want to ask any member from the public that would like to speak.
I know, I know.
Very quickly, good teams, paramedics, the police department, fire departments, their response times, one of the best. It's not the best, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemeyer. So now anyone else from the public? Okay, we have Malcolm Sai.
Yes, I, I think the Milpitas Fire Department is really just one of the best in the Bay Area. And we, we see some other cities, they're just grappling with their own fire departments sometimes, but I'm just so glad that we have a good relationship here. I still remember, feels like a lifetime ago before COVID, when we would celebrate, folks like with the firefighter of the year awards. And it's always easy to celebrate in good times, but even as we celebrate, we know that these are the same people who are gonna be out there during the worst of times, out there saving lives. And I think we definitely saw that with the once in a century crisis of COVID. When I did serve on the school board, we always worked really well with the fire department. And it was always a pleasure to work with them. And even to this day, we see very good response times. Like there was a fire in the pines pretty recently, and they were just out there like, like that, and preemptively evacuating folks. I did study Transportation and Emergency Management Graduate Program at the Minnetonka Transportation Institute. And, you know, there's always that, people always talk about the gap between theory and practice, but everything I've always seen, the Milpitas Fire Department is really putting that theory into practice and, and really doing, doing the smartest things possible. On that note, we've been seeing increased climate threats in recent years, and I think we're gonna see more of that in the coming years. I think we should be looking at adopting more cutting-edge drone technologies to assist with our firefighting efforts, especially reducing the risk to our men and women who are out there on the front lines. I am available to support with drone technology that is integrating artificial intelligence. And I think we, we fight the fires of today, but we'll also be prepared to fight the disasters of the future. And Milpitas leads the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Anyone else? So now we can ask President Gabe Borland.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Want to take a moment today to express our gratitude to your unwavering support for public safety. I've met with many of you and spent countless hours talking about the community, how we can better serve them, what their needs are as they change and develop over time. And each of you has been very committed to assisting us with our goal and our priorities of providing the highest level of service to this community. The negotiating process is challenging and time-consuming. We had great commitment and support from the city manager's office, Ned Thomas, Matt Cano. Thank you very much for supporting us in this endeavor. To go along with that, I know Kelly Armley spent hundreds of hours with us, so a special thank you to you. I know you had a lot going on, and she was fantastic. So appreciate that, as well as the Finance Director, Luz. You know, she spent a lot of time. I know that the city is very busy, and this was over six months in the making. So took a lot of time and resources, and we appreciate the support and the kind words from the council, and we look forward to, you know, serving the community in the best way possible moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you firefighters for all the hard work you do. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we are going to pull, as we've already pulled and we've discussed items C-11, C-20 is the recusal from Barbara Dio. So we're gonna go ahead and vote for the bulk of the consent item, the consent calendar.
We already have a motion on the table from Vice Mayor Chua, seconded by Councilmember Leanne. I will call for the vote. The first is Councilmember Barbara Dio.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan? Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Thank you for that. Okay, so now we can discuss the, well, actually, he's just gonna, he's just gonna explain why he's recusing himself. C-20.
Did you turn it on?
All right, for advisement, although I don't see any conflict, I want to disclose that I am a member of the Knights of Columbus. And just to avoid budgets of impropriety, I'm gonna recuse myself in this decision, and I'll defer to the council for any discussion that there is.
Okay, all right.
And then Councilmember Barbara Dio, you'd step off the dais at this time.
Okay, we'll call for the vote now. Do we have to make a motion for this one too?
Yes.
Oh, we have to, okay, we need a motion. Move to approve C-20. Okay, I second that. Okay, now we can call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Councilmember Fan?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Okay, that has, consent calendar has been approved. And so now we're moving on to public hearings. And City Manager Ned Thomas, 21.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another Community Facilities District election that has come before the council. The city clerk will read the vote, and then the council will vote on that to annex this. It's for a development that is located on Wool Drive.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and council members, my name is Arthur Valderrama from Public Works. The following presentation is for Agenda Item Number 21, requesting council to adopt a resolution, show please, to adopt a resolution certifying election results and adding properties located at 470, 480, 490, and 500 Wool Drive into Communities Facility District Number 2005, Annexation Number 24. Next slide, please. The Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982 was enacted to authorize local agencies to form community facilities districts, CFDs, as a mechanism to address the lack of financing for public facilities and services for newly developed areas. CFD 2005-1 was formed by the city through Resolution Number 7521 in 2005 to fund city facilities and services that will support new developments outside of the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan area. Funding will support the following services: police protection, fire protection, maintenance and lighting of public facilities, flood and storm protection, and remedial hazardous waste removal. Next slide, please. The development is located at 470, 480, 490, and 500 Wool Drive on four vacant 0.2 acre lots outside of the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan area. Site development permits were approved by the zoning administrator on January 25, 2024. The development consists of four detached single-family homes being built on four separate lots. Next slide, please. This development outside of the Metro Specific Plan is conditioned to be annexed into CFD 2005-1, Annexation Number 24. is conditioned to be annexed into CFD 2005-1, Annexation Number 24. The registrar of voters certified that there are zero registered voters residing within the annexation boundaries. This annexation requires a vote from the property owner within the boundaries of the proposed annexation. The owner of the parcel agrees to the CFD annexation. Next slide, please. Therefore, the recommendation is following receipt of election results from the city clerk. Council will please adopt a resolution certifying election results and add properties located at 470, 480, 490, and 500 Wool Drive into CFD Number 2005-1, Annexation Number 24. Thank you.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions from that, if you don't mind, before we adopt it. So when did this project get approved?
In January 2024. By zoning administrator.
Did, okay, so we're going to be building single detached homes? Or condominiums? I'm not sure.
So we are building four single-family residences on four separate lots.
Okay, so four single detached, single.
Correct. As a backgrounder, the subdivision was actually created in 1969. That subdivision created 192 lots. However, the last four was not built upon and was retained by the Church of Christ. And for so many years, it was a church.
Right, I remember.
Yes, and only in, I think, 2021 was when they decided to proceed with the rest of the four single-family residences.
Yeah, there was a church there for a very, very long time. That's why I was wondering how, when did this project come to be? But it was already approved, it's just that they built a church and now, okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to call on, for the public, public hearing. If anyone from the public has any comments on this item?
I know we always consider the planning commission and SICA, all those. And I believe if it's really, is not really an eminent domain. I think if it's very useful and need to have that establishment planned, then we should go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make comment on this item?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, so we will close the public hearing and go to council discussion. Is there anyone from the council that would like to make any comments? And we have Vice Mayor Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I, I would like to ask a question, please. Can you show the four lots again, please, the four ones?
The four lots?
Uh huh. Do you have that?
Can you let us know what slide number that is?
Yeah, I can find the slide number.
That's all right. My question is, so this is the permit for annexation. What's the next step?
The next step is for the CFD annexation map to be recorded with the county. And after recordation, that's when the CFD is actually amended, and therefore, the city would now be able to receive the funds from these four new properties.
What's the next permit to be asked, to be complied with? What is it?
Yeah, actually, this is somewhat of a unique situation in that this is not a subdivision. It's actually a.
More residential.
Four lots already created in 1969.
Right.
So the permits that Public Works is reviewing now are for site development permits.
So after the annexation and the SFD has been approved by the county, then the developer will ask for, what is it?
The site development permits, and they will pull the building permits.
And then the building permit, right?
Correct.
And how long do we anticipate each step?
Currently, the improvement plans are under review by land development staff. And within, say, one or two more rounds of reviews.
Reviews for what?
Engineering reviews of the plans.
Of the what?
The plans.
Then wasn't there an engineering review already of Public Works and planning done before?
Yes, that was in 1969. Now, what Public Works is looking at are the specific improvements for the site, namely.
Do we have a checklist of this? I mean, you know, I'm just frustrated because I'm hearing from other residents that they go and ask for something, they go and ask for a development, and then they were told to do one, and then they come back and do one, and they said, now you have to do two. Why don't we have a checklist of items to be done in the timeline? I think this is frustrating with, I'm not speaking directly to this project, but I'm, overall feedback that I got, and I'm sharing it with everybody, so be aware. This is the frustration. They don't have, we should have a standard on how long will it take to get a permit for, from annexation to site development permit to building permit. I think this has to be on the side, but that's the frustrations that I hear a lot, that I've been hearing a lot from anybody that would request for something at the permit level. The reason why I'm asking, how long does it take? Do you have an answer to that?
So this has been under review since the beginning of the year. And usually, the review is a function of the quality of the work that the engineer on record submits to the city. Assuming that the set of plans are in very good order, then it goes much quicker, say, within one or two plan review cycles, which would take about three to six months.
I was told that each step should take 30 days. But once one step, one is done, then they don't hear from us until like close to 30 days because the perception is that you have 30 days to respond, and that's not acceptable. We need to review that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. If I may, the way the process works is for any private development project, you know, it initially starts with the planning phase, which is entitlement phase. Once the project is entitled, and all departments that have reviewed the project deemed it complete, then a set of conditions of approval are established, which are given to the developer for them to complete the project. After the planning phase or entitlement phase, the building permit phase starts. And you know, there's submittals for the onsite permits, which is the building permits that are handled by the building department. And then there's a public improvement phase, which is handled by the Public Works Land Development Engineering Section. Ideally, we try to complete the reviews within those 30 days.
But that's not happening. My feedback is it's not happening within 30 days.
Well, I mean, part of it is sometimes the permits or the plans are not.
Anyway, that's okay. So I'm going to make a request at the announcement part to address this issue. Because this project, specific project, I look into it, and it started in 2022. It's been two years already, and it's still at this phase. So that's all right. I will request later on to do a, to do. They should have a roadmap on how long their project will take. We should have a step-by-step and how long, what is our deliverables for each step, and how long will it take, so they know. They don't go there blindly and say, this is the next step. And you go there, and then there's another step. That's not your problem, I think. It's an overall issue that we need to address.
In speaking about this project specifically, when it was first brought up to planning, there was four lots that had been set up originally. However, the church had been constructed.
Right, they had to have a demolished.
What happened was, initially, we thought that there had been a lot merger for all the four lots because under Subdivision Map Act, you're not, you shouldn't have been able to, they shouldn't have been able to build a church across lot lines, which is how it was built. So we had, we had to go back to the county, try to find information as to whether or not that the lot lines have been, the lots have been merged. In the end, we find, it was determined that they never had been merged.
Right.
So that kind of delayed the initial process of the approval of the entitlements for the project. So that was some delay in there. But now we've been working with the developer to try to get all the building permits approved, as well as the public improvements that are part of the project.
Okay. Thank you both. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there any other comments on this? But so I want to touch base, I want to kind of piggyback on what your comment is. You know, we've been talking about streamlining, because that's, we, she's not the only one that's heard a lot of complaints. And I think we probably have to have some type of a workshop or meeting, because this is an ongoing issue. Remember, time is money. Applicants come in, and they have to put down, you know, so much money for their permits, and it's taking longer than what it should. And we need to come back and revisit this. But in the interim, so for this resolution certifying the election results, so we need to move on on this. Okay, is there, thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to make any comments? If not. Okay, city clerk?
This is the canvas of the votes. There was one ballot received. All votes were in favor of the proposition. It has been approved.
And so now we're going to call, we're going to make a motion, and a second, I need a motion in a second. We have, it was moved by Vice Mayor Chua, and it was seconded by Councilmember Leanne. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbadio.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Thank you. So now moving on to the community development. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Our next item is a presentation from our Economic Development and Strategic Initiatives Director, Alex Andrade. He has been working for a number of weeks on this presentation. We're happy to present it to you. It comes to you more or less at the request of the council back in June as we were talking about the budget. There was a request to start a little earlier on the budget process. And so as part of that, we wanted to give the council this overview with some of the context, the larger context for revenues that are coming into the city and some of the activities that the Economic Development Office is doing to, you know, on revenue generation for the city, but just also some of their other activities. So I'll turn the time over to Director Andrade to present this information and then hopefully have a good conversation with the council.
Thank you, City Manager Thomas. Good evening, everyone, mayor, vice mayor, and city council. My name is Alex Andrade. I'm the Director of Economic Development and Strategic Initiatives. It's my pleasure to be before you tonight to talk about the economic development strategy update, as well as economic indicators update. We can go to the next slide, please. So the reason we are here before you tonight is that one of your seven city council priorities is actually economic development and job growth. Within the city's general plan 2040, there is an economic development element. And specifically, Action Item 1DB states that the Office of Economic Development will provide annual updates on the health of the local economy to both the Economic Development and Trade Commission and the city council. So as City Manager Thomas was indicating, the reason we're here is really threefold. One is, we'll give you an update on the economic development strategy, which is scheduled to sunset in May of next year. We'll talk about both macro and microeconomic indicators. And indicators think of a measurement of activity of the health of the local economy. And then lastly, we want to begin to commence the conversations about fiscal year 25, '26 as it relates to the budget. We want to acknowledge that we've heard you, many of the council members, discussed in June that you desire to have the budget conversations begin earlier. So we're starting those conversations earlier. Also, we have to begin talking about ensuring that we have a long, stable fiscal, healthy environment. So next slide, please. I will say that also, we can go to the next slide, but I, if you don't mind, it's, you can hold your questions so I can get through these slides swiftly. If you have a strong desire to ask questions, please do, but I ask that you refrain if you can. So the mission statement for the Office of Economic Development is on the screen. I will just remind people that the Office of Economic Development, in many ways, functions like the Swiss Army knife of the city. We do a lot of different things. Not only do we do business attraction, retention, and expansion, but we work with our business and development communities to ensure that we have a strong workforce. We work closely with the city manager's office, Recreation and Community Services, as well as Charmaine Angelo, our Public Information Officer, on branding. And we do a lot of permit facilitation in partnership with development services. And we don't do all of the city's real estate work, but we do some. Next slide, please. So the economic development strategy, it is a five-year policy document that the city council approved on May 5, 2020. Prior to that, it was 15 years when we last had an economic development strategy. My hope is that that doesn't happen again, because it's really, really critical for our fiscal health. I won't read every single bullet point there, but I will turn your attention to the top two bullet points. Really important. They drive the Office of Economic Development's work plan. Matter of fact, the strategy itself drives our work plan. I'm really proud of the fact that this work plan has not been sitting on a shelf. It's not collecting dust. It's actually a very dynamic work plan, and we're putting it into implementation. We're always focusing on cultivating a strong, stable, and diverse local economy. And we're very much focused on fiscal sustainability in order to ensure that the city has adequate funds for essential services. As you know, we're not a for-profit-making center, but we need to find revenues anywhere that we can. Next slide, please. This slide is going to speak to you further. Unfortunately, on the screen, it doesn't show on the right-hand side. But of the 64 implementation actions that make up this five-year policy document, there are four, rather, there are seven topic areas outlined on the left-hand side. But I will turn your attention to the right-hand side of the screen. This is the progress of where we are. Our economic development strategy includes 64 implementation actions. We've completed about 75%, so we're close to 50 actions completed. On the screen, you can see, at least here at the council chambers, 10 actions are in progress, and I think we have seven or eight that have not been started. Actually, I think it's five that haven't been started. But we have about six months to get to May, and our small, but our high-performing team is going to do its best to get to 100%. Next slide, please. The last four years have consisted of lots of accomplishments for the Office of Economic Development. This is not an exhaustive list that's. This is not a an exhaustive list that's in front of you, but just some key components of what we done. Remember that the Economic Development Strategy was approved by the City Council in May of twenty twenty. It was a couple of months after the economic shock of of the pandemic. So there's a lot of focus on business resiliency and recovery. On the right-hand side of the screen are business logos of some of the companies that we have attracted. And we've assisted through permit facilitation. Thanks to the City Council and the approval of utilization of both ARPA. Dollars as well as CDBG dollars, we've dispersed over one point eight million dollars to over four hundred small businesses. Thirteen of our twenty hotels received ten thousand dollar grants. Workforce development grants have been dispersed. I'll I'll turn your attention to the bottom here, business expansion. Business attraction is incredibly important for the city. Business expansion, according to the International Council of Economic Development. Eighty percent of new business investment as well as new job starts come from existing businesses. So the screen there, there's a black line, but it represents KLA, Western Digital, Sandisk, as well as. Oh, I'm trying to remember that last business. But nonetheless, those are businesses that are investing and expanding. KLA, for example, they've been here for a long time. They have the headquarters here. They occupied the former FireEye site and they brought in five hundred new employees. Next slide, please. We're going to move into both macro and micro level economic indicators. When you think of macro, think of national level indicators. And when you think of micro, it'll be local indicators. There's three slides within the macroeconomic indicators and we can move on to this next slide, please. So inflation and interest rates. Again, that that line down at the bottom unfortunately doesn't show everything here. But the blue line represents inflation and the black line represents interest rates. The Federal Reserve is responsible for ensuring that they pull and push levers to stabilize the economy whenever needed. Typically, a two percent to two and a half percent is generally where inflation is. But as you can see, we have had an economic shock due to the pandemic. And that's when you see the inflation rate, that blue line continue to increase dramatically. To a point where in June of twenty twenty-two, we saw inflation rate of nine percent. The United States hasn't seen that kind of an inflation rate since the nineteen eighties with the oil crisis. The Federal Reserve attempted to drop interest rates down to zero percent to stabilize that. And between June of twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three, the Fed had eleven instances of increasing interest rates. What we've seen most recently is that the Federal Reserve in September reduced the interest rates by fifty basis points. In November, November fourth, to be exact, there was an additional twenty-five. Basis points reduction and we do see that continuing to happen in twenty twenty-five. The next slide will build off of the inflation and interest rates. This has to do with consumer spending and consumer confidence. The two gray vertical lines represent on the left-hand side, the Great Recession in two thousand eight through two thousand and nine. And then, of course, in twenty twenty, the pandemic. Between the Great Recession and the pandemic, we saw consumer spending and consumer confidence pretty much running on all cylinders. After the Great Recession, we've seen some kind of skittish behavior. We are starting to see. Consumer confidence increase in twenty twenty-four, likely due to the interest rates as we were just discussing. Next slide, please. This is a national view of the unemployment rate, same vertical lines as the previous slide, Great Recession and the pandemic. You see that as after the Great Recession, when the economy tends to do better, the unemployment rate decreases. We're going to now move to the next slide, which represents local level information, microeconomic indicators. And we're going to start with our role in Silicon Valley, which is really, really important for our brand. There is no more successful, creative, innovative place on the planet than Silicon Valley. Milpitas is part of Silicon Valley. One of the economic indicators that we like to track is patent generation. It allows us to better understand the creativity innovation that our local workforce and businesses are working on. In twenty sixteen, the Silicon Valley Institute for Regional Studies ranked the city of Milpitas within the top twenty for patent generation. And that continues. Just a few weeks ago, there was a new list that was released. It was a top three hundred patent generators. And I only looked at the top one hundred and we have nine businesses that are either headquartered in Milpitas or have a presence here. After the names of those businesses is the ranking between one to one hundred. I think that's very important for us to use as our brand. But also want to kindly remind you that the only reason that those companies are here is that we have land zoned specifically for these uses. You've heard me talk quite a bit in the past about ensuring that we preserve and protect our employment lands. For these innovative innovative businesses to have an opportunity to expand and grow. Next slide, please, which actually builds on the importance of. Next slide, please. So it builds on the importance of employment lands. Job creation, diversification of the economy, which is really important for economic vitality. Business clustering that happens and creates not only efficiency but allows business and business transactions. Of course, the talent, companies want to be where near talented workforce is located. The revenues you know about, but I really want to focus on this zoning. The general plan twenty forty is a twenty-year development plan with a with a horizon of twenty years. In June eighteen. On June eighteen of this year, you rezoned a light industrial area for business park restructuring development in the southwestern employment area as well as our innovation district. It's absolutely critical that we allow the economy, which has changed quite a bit because now we're in a post-pandemic economy and things are evolving and changing. It's absolutely critical for the city's long-term fiscal health that we allow these zoning and these businesses to come and grow within these areas. Next slide, please. So this slide has to do with foreign direct investment known as FDI. And think about that as a definition related to individuals and or businesses. That are foreign-based that are investing in Milpitas. I would turn your attention to the graph here of jobs supported. Roughly about thirteen thousand businesses that fall under foreign direct investment. That's very impressive to the tune of the fact that we are number eleven in the state. The state has four hundred and eighty-two businesses. I'm sorry, the state has four hundred and eighty-two cities. This is information that came from the Governor's Office of Economic Development, known as GoBiz. The pie chart to the right is where the jobs are supported, coming from businesses and investors from Japan. The UK, Singapore and Taiwan. Then by the numbers, we've ranked twenty-one for foreign-owned enterprises. These are enterprises that originate out of Singapore, Japan, Taiwan, United Kingdom and China. And the top sectors, as you can see, because we're in Silicon Valley and technology and advanced manufacturing. Are incredibly important for our economy, metal manufacturing. Professional scientific and technical services. And the other trades that you see there. Next slide, please.
So that's for the state of California, right?
The ranking is exactly for the state of California, yes. So we ranked number eleven. Just last year, we ranked seventeen. For jobs supported by foreign direct investment. Here, I just want to remind you of who our top ten employers are. Cisco Systems, KLA, Western Digital. Just want to remind you that this is a part of technology and advanced manufacturing. KLA, Western Digital, Flex, as well as Headway. Those are companies that are in the expansion mode. That means they're investing in Milpitas and that's exactly what we want to see. BD Biosciences, as you all know, is a new business to Milpitas. They have eight hundred employees in person with another two hundred working online. And we're very proud to have worked with Development Services. Approximately twenty-eight people here at the city worked on the permitting process for BD Biosciences. The City Manager's Office and Office of Economic Development prioritize that project. And it's a great example of how we partner within the city.
I don't know if you have it on your next presentation.
Is there a way in? You have to say.
Is there a way you can show the top? Top businesses, whether it's small. In terms of revenue for the city? Can you do that? What are the top ten businesses that contributes to to Milpitas in terms of revenue? Any any kind of revenue?
Shades between property tax, sales tax and hotel tax.
I'm looking at businesses.
Yeah.
Because I was told a long time ago that the gasoline station, gas, gas businesses, we. Is number is top there. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do. There's a slide that has the top twenty-five sales tax producers. That'll it may not get you to where you want to go, but it'll give you a sense of the diversity, which does include.
This one, you can you can add the revenue generated by these companies. You see what I'm saying?
We can take a look at both sales tax and property tax, but it won't be all-inclusive. That's okay.
Try.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
We could please go back to the presentation. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chua. We will do our best. Next slide, please. So we're moving on to unemployment rates. What you see before you in the blue line is the Milpitas average, annual average between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four and in orange is Santa Clara. You see that before the pandemic, our unemployment rate was at sub-three percent, again firing on all cylinders, Silicon Valley doing fantastic. Again, the unfortunate economic impact of the pandemic. We had an annual average of eight point two percent in twenty twenty, but I'll remain remind you that in April of twenty twenty, we grew to thirteen percent unemployment. We then did see a reduction in our unemployment rate, but since twenty twenty-two, likely due to technology. Firms laying people off, we've seen an increase in our unemployment rate. We are lower than the state as well as the United States as a whole in our unemployment rate. Next slide, please. So I'm just going to pause here just so you could take a look at our overall commercial real estate inventory by type. Next slide, please. We're going to move into the revenue side of the presentation.
The last slide, please. These are all commercial or in the retail industrial. What is the ratio? If you take all the retail and the industrial combined, what is the ratio against the residential makeup?
I don't believe we have that information at this point in time, but we can try to get that for you.
The reason why I'm asking is you you know where I'm getting at. The ratio between industrial, commercial and residential, there is a same ratio. If we exceed one of one of each or any one of them, then we're in trouble. That's that's what I'm looking at.
Vice Mayor Chua, are you referring to the jobs-housing balance ratio?
Yes.
We we have that, but the last time we did that. In our Economic Development Strategy goes back to twenty twenty. So it's it's dated, it's pandemic time. We had a few more jobs than we do. We were above on that jobs versus the housing by a little bit, but we can get that for you.
Okay.
Jobs housing.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We can go back to the presentation, please. Next slide. Yes, so here we are going to begin the revenue part of the presentation. Now, the city has various revenue sources, but specifically for the Office of Economic Development. Because we are working directly with the business community and developers, we like to monitor property tax, which is in green. TOT in yellow and in purple, sales tax. You see that we're we're actually quite unique in our property tax revenues. And our property values in Silicon Valley when compared to other metropolitan statistical areas. Where you do see some downturns in property values. We're in Silicon Valley and it goes back to that brand and technology and advanced manufacturing. So we have generally seen an upward trend for many years. And we're going to get deeper into each one of these revenue sources. I will turn your attention at this point to both the sales tax and TOT. And you see a very similar pattern there and that has to do with volatility. After the pandemic, we've seen some changes there. We know that our hotels of all business sectors, based on what we know in economic development, has been probably the most challenged business sector. But we're we are improving and we're we're coming along. I'm going to move to the, okay, Vice Mayor Chua.
Do you know why there is a decrease? Sales tax from thirty-eight million to thirty-five, I think, do we know?
I believe that has to do with actual numbers versus fiscal year twenty-four is we're still in the year.
Oh, I see.
Quarter four, we don't have information yet for quarter three data. And quarter four tends to be a pretty good sales tax revenue.
December.
Exactly.
And that's why it's not, yeah, I forgot about that. It's not, we still have a month at least.
Yes.
Okay.
Next slide, please. We're going to move a little bit deeper into property tax. Now, on the right-hand side of the screen, you see that same consistent upward trajectory. And we've seen almost a seventy percent increase in property tax revenues. From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four, thirty-four million dollars to almost fifty million dollars. That's very significant and a very important resource or revenue rather to the city. On the left-hand side of the screen, I wanted to showcase the top ten. Property owners that are industrial and commercial owners. You see the industrial owners, how it relates to the larger business businesses. Also are large property owners. From a commercial perspective, Milpitas Mills, that's Simon Properties, they own the Great Mall. Next slide, please. The next one, the next two slides have to do with sales tax, specifically quarter two of twenty twenty-four. This is the latest information that we have. Now, we're not able to share the top twenty-five sales tax producers in ranked order, but we are able to share that information in alphabetical order. So I'll give you time to take a look at that, but also the chart on the right-hand side has to do with. Me wanting to highlight the importance of business-to-business transactions and you see that in that top line there, business and industry. Where seven hundred and seventy businesses have interacted and have had transactions. Our restaurants and hotels are definitely improving. Our autos and transportation will likely hopefully increase in quarter four of this year. The next slide also has to do with sales tax, but it's geocoded. And I wanted to showcase here four important. Employment land areas and revenue generation. In colors, you see the Milpitas Metro Specific Plan in yellow. In green is the Gateway Main Street Specific Plan. In red is the southwestern employment area, which is one of our largest geographic employment areas. And central manufacturing in blue, that's our heavy industrial area. This, you will see, does not represent a full one hundred percent, but what I was trying to highlight is that these four areas. Generate close to sixty percent of the overall sales tax that that's generated in these areas.
Is that? Is that for including the residential or just the commercial?
Sales. The sales for sales tax.
It's businesses.
I mean, sorry.
These are the businesses.
Business has to be business, okay.
But but that is a good point.
Commercial and then the businesses, you know, the manufacturing, I guess.
Yes, all all businesses. But I think you're absolutely right, Mayor Montano. There are residents in some of these geographic areas. Nonetheless, we just want to remind you that I am of the belief, my professional belief, that the city should. Have an obligation to ensure that we have available lands for these businesses to continue to expand and grow. In twenty twenty, during our Economic Development Strategy, we learned a lot, a lot of new statistics. But one thing that really stood out to me was only twelve percent of Milpitas residents actually work in Milpitas. We need to increase that number for quality life issues or sustainability. People want to be close to their families and their jobs. These are the places that allow that to happen.
Mayor.
Right. Vice Mayor.
Director Alex. Was this data? Is this the first time you did this data or can you compare this with the last time you did it? was this data, is this the first time you did this data, or can you compare this with the last time you did it?
I, I want to determine whether it's up or down.
We can do a comparison that's geocoded with these areas going back to when the city started contracting with H D L for sales tax.
The, what's the, the frequency or what's the time, the time horizon? Is this a year or?
We receive this on, this information on a quarterly basis, so we could probably do, we can probably go back to quarter two of twenty twenty three and do an annual, and then from now have a baseline and then continue.
I think you have more, eh, you have a better picture if you compare this data with uh with another, like you're saying, twenty twenty three on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, one thing that we're really keen on wanting to do is to compare pre-pandemic to pandemic and post-pandemic. And so we are hopeful that we'll be able to come before you and make a uh ask for twenty twenty five, twenty six for the next economic development strategy. It's my hope that we're able to look back
Yes.
and have these data sets.
Mm-hmm.
We now have a baseline. Like I said before, it was fifteen years before that, going back to two thousand and six. But now we have a baseline and we can do comparison and contrast. It'll help us kind of push and pull levers and figure out where is it that we can improve our economy.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we're, we only have a couple more slides left. I think the, the next one has to do with uh transit occupancy tax. Back in twenty eighteen, our hotel tax increased from ten percent to eighteen percent. And as I alluded to earlier, our hotel businesses have been the hardest hit. Thankfully, you all approved ten thousand dollar grants to thirteen of twenty hotels. And um it's been a challenge, and the uh this kind of V shape uh trajectory shows that we're seeing kind of a leveling off in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. The hotel G M's that we speak to are of the belief that in twenty twenty six, their occupancy rate will get back to pre-pandemic. We're hopeful, and um this is a very important source of revenue for us. Okay, we're moving on to the last slide. This is the conclusion slide. We're just bringing it all together, and then we'll have you ask questions. So here, we just wanna ensure that we continue to have a business-friendly environment. We talk often, often about business or rather revenue generation, and having a business-friendly environment is core to that. We wanna protect and preserve our employment lands. So I ask that we continue to proceed with what's in our general plan twenty forty that was approved just a few years ago. The Milpitas Metro Specific Plan has five districts, one of which is the Innovation District. And then we hope uh our planning department may get before you uh for consideration of the Gateway Main Street Specific Plan, likely in the summer or sometime around that time in twenty twenty five. And we hope that we're able to move forward with the zoning and the land use that has been approved and will be approved. And we try our best to eliminate or completely or reduce spot zoning that ultimately ends up uh hurting our local economy. We will begin in the new year uh very aggressive and intense business attraction as it relates to our Innovation District. We're working with a branding uh company to help us with that. We will focus, as I've been saying, on artificial intelligence, automotive technology, as well as biosciences. We have been focusing as a city and council under Main Street Realization, we will continue to work with developers and property owners on investing in our downtown. We wanna attract new businesses. In particular, we wanna create placemaking and activate our Main Street with retail and restaurants. And we are working diligently on trying to re-establish a downtown business association, and we have a meeting tomorrow with our business owners. We will continue to work within the metro area to attract new businesses. There's a lot of residential there, but there's also ground floor retail that complements the residential development above that, so we wanna bring in new retail businesses there. And then again, just we'll end here by reminding you that our five-year uh very dynamic plan will sunset in May of twenty twenty five, and we'll have another conversation about next steps for that. And so with that, I do wanna say thank you to our new economic development specialist that's sitting right behind me. His nail is, his name is Cal Zubair. He uh comes from the city of Newark. He's been with us for two months, and he's been doing fantastic as it relates to the data gathering, analysis, and then we also have our finance director, Ertluus, who has also been helping us with a lot of the data. We, the three of us are here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex, for all your hard work and also for the new um specialist that came on board, planning um economic development specialist. So I have a couple of questions for you. Can you put up a slide with um the bar, not the bar graph, the uh line graphs?
The, the geocoded sales tax?
Number eleven. It just showed a property tax and sales tax.
At slide eighteen, please?
It had the three, three colors, yellow and
Yeah.
green and
Can we please put slide eighteen on the screen?
Was it eighteen? My, my main question was uh, you know, what, the number one is property tax. Number two is the s- sales tax. However, it, it just seems that we're depending too much on the property taxes. It should be closer to the, if, if, if not above the property taxes. You know, it should be flipped, and that goes back to the businesses. We need to start bringing in more businesses. We can't be just depending on property taxes, and I'd like to see a comparison with other cities. Um yeah, I think cities, cities that are similar to our size, um I think Gilroy. Uh so, you know, I wanna see what, you know, is there, is their business, is their sales tax revenues higher than their property tax revenue? And if they are, why? That just seems to me that, because we're only thirteen point six square miles, right? And we, and we're depending a lot on the, on the property taxes, but it just seems to me we, we should start, should be the sales tax should be closer to that, uh closer to the green or if not above it. And uh that's, that's how we can really stay, you know, stay, make sure that we have that revenue stream coming in. Um you re- recall, I don't know if you recall, but remember back in two thousand eight when people lost their homes and we were really oh man, we, we, the cities were hurting. I mean, a lot of people lost, so we were really behind on the property tax. We uh so I'm just concerned that we're, it should be closer to that uh, that green line.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh a few thoughts there. This doesn't represent all of the city's revenues. There are other pretty significant revenues, and we can have our finance director, if you wanna go a little bit deeper um to share more about that. If you look at the fiscal year twenty nineteen, you do see a closer uh connection between property tax and sales tax there. Things have changed a lot, and the pandemic has a lot to do with that.
Yeah, I think that's what the, the Vice Mayor had wanted to see, some kind of trends with the comparison from previous years.
Yeah, I, I would actually caution, if there's a desire to have sales tax to be our largest revenue source, that's really challenging because it's very volatile. And when the economy is doing really well, our sales tax are doing really well, but we, we know it's, it's dynamic, it's always moving.
May I can ask?
It, it's
Think you need to press that button.
We need to do some analysis, uh but we do need to focus on diversifying our economy.
I have, I have a question, Alex, based on piggybacking on Mayor's question. When you say property tax, does it mean residential and commercial and industrial? Is that what you're saying?
For, for this particular uh data source, it is all, all-inclusive. It's not just
Oh, it's all included.
Yeah, it's not just um
Okay.
Brett, it's not just commercial.
The mayor, but I think it's okay. So, oh, I thought it was just for the homes, property tax.
My apologies, I should have um, I should have mentioned that, cause that's actually really important, because the other two data sources are coming from the business sector.
Yeah, that's
And this is all-inclusive.
I think uh Director Alex, if you can break that down in terms of industrial, commercial and residential, that would, it, it is more meaningful.
Give a better picture.
We can have a better analysis and decision-making data. I think that would be awesome.
Yeah, we, we will do that. Thank you.
Good question, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ask, do you have any, another question?
No.
Okay, so I have another question. So on the last slide, when you had your
The conclusion slide or the?
Conclusion sla- slide. Um so one, one of the um bullet points there, you said how uh uh oh. To ensure that we have a friendly business environment. So I wanna know, I wanna find out, how, how much, how do you ensure that we have a friendly business environment? What, what are your benchmarks to ensure that we have a business-friendly environment?
There are things that the city can control and things that the city cannot control.
Like what?
You have power in that you can control land use and zoning. If you think of that as currency, it's really, really important. When you rezone land, it can make that land and that property a lot more valuable. At this point in time, we're having some challenges with our, our bread and butter from a commercial perspective is technology and advanced manufacturing. When you bring in the residential values, they're much higher, so we're constantly competing. Industrial areas are um areas that are desirable because they generally don't cost as much as residential.
But how does that make that a friendly environment?
So there's, there's a lot, there's, there's other things, obviously, the permitting process. We wanna continue to
That's, that's the biggest
It's a citywide um uh process. Uh but, but there's, there's ways for us to brand ourselves as a friendly city, and we, and we are, business-friendly city. I think in a lot of ways, unfortunately, there are some individuals and businesses that sometimes don't get the the result that they're desiring, perhaps in a specific, specific timeframe. Sometimes there's additional reviews, as we were talking about earlier. Um there are improvements that, that we could make as a city.
So uh we, we just hired a, not too recently, a permit navigator. So has that permit navigator, is, is it working out for us?
Yeah, it is tremendously. So Nat Sandoval is our new permit navigator. She's been with us for about four months. In the first two months, she helped roughly about thirty businesses go through the permit process. She just had a baby, baby Lucas, so she's on leave. She's due back uh before the end of the year.
Okay. All right, uh that's anyone have, anyone else have any more questions? Uh we have a council member, Lynn. Did you press her?
So I have a couple of um questions. I received emails from Director Andrade. Um and I asked this, but I want to see if you can repeat the answer uh to share with the community. The, if you can explain the different class uh in the commercial real estate, what does it mean by class A, B, and C? Uh my other question is when you said you have planned to grow and balance the job and the housing, um share with us, what is your plan? And I, before you answer others, I want to thank you and the staff for the detailed reports. Um going through, getting us all the percentage and all the numbers was pretty impressive. We thank you for that. Uh and I hope that with the World Cup and Super Bowl coming in twenty twenty six, that will really help us with the uh transient uh occupi- occupancy tax and sales tax, um which is like Santa Clara, like around the corner, so. But those are the two questions I have. If you can share the answers with the community as well.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Lynn. As it relates to class A, B, and C, it's somewhere between an art and a science. But generally, uh we're talking about structures, age of the building, the location and accessibility are important, the infrastructure, the technical capabilities, uh H vac systems, the quality of the finishes. That's generally what tenants are looking at, and class A would be the most prestigious. Generally, newer product in a really good location, uh it would attract a premier office tenant, for example. Um just high-end tenant improvements, such things as daycare centers within that structure or valet services. A class B, nice facilities, you know, they're nice and they're functional buildings. Uh they do have some high-end fixtures, but they're typically a little older. They still may have a, an onsite parking and a cafe, and class C, basically fixer-uppers. Um generally, smaller businesses that don't have a large budget would go into class C. And thank you for as, asking that question, because the majority of our product, our, our uh commercial product here is class C. During the economic development strategy analysis, we learned that the majority of our commercial buildings are thirty years and older. So when businesses are coming in, they may do uh improvements to the skin of the building, maybe paint, maybe some finishes. They're not fully demolishing generally and, and coming up with new construction. But then they have, when you walk into the structure, there's new tenant improvements and, and it's generally nice spaces. But uh but it would be good for us to move into more of a class A space. Your other question?
Yes.
Did you have it?
When you say majority, what is the percentage?
That's hard to say, and I really wish I had that slide. Um it's, oh gosh. It, it would only be an educated guess, but it's probably upwards of seventy five percent.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
When you think of cranes around the city, they're generally building residential. We haven't seen new office in a long time. We've seen industrial buildings, uh which generally tend to be tilt-up type buildings. Amazon will likely come in and invest. They'll uh produce a five hundred thousand square foot facility. But likely, same thing, will be a tilt-up industrial building.
Okay.
So moving on to your next question, what has to do with jobs and housing, and you've asked, what is my plan? I wish I had a crystal ball and have a better opportunity to respond to that. Um it's a complex one. Uh I will say though, if we do not have an economic development strategy, things are gonna be challenging for us. As I mentioned, our economic development strategy has been the Office of Economic Development's work plan. It gives us purpose. We know what we need to do. We're focused. Um this is an important question, and I'd, I'd love to come back with a better response. And hopefully um we'll have an opportunity to discuss that further during the budget process when we'll make a budget proposal for the economic development strategy for the next five years. Is, is that okay or do you?
Absolutely. That's the reason why I asked that question, so that you can bring back, and maybe perhaps we'll have a study session too.
Sure.
In doing that. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments? I just have, I do have a couple of questions. Um so
Mayor, Councilmember Barbara Dio has
I didn't see you, so I will
Thank you.
Let you speak first. Okay. Can you hit that there?
Yes.
You know, back home in the Philippines, right? Uh when there's an election, new leaders are are uh elected and they sit, and uh they have their own policies, whether political policies, whether economic policies uh they have, right? And most of the time, uh I'm not talking about the election results here. I'm gonna relate it to, to my question. Most of the time, they have uh new policies and I forget, forget uh prior policies and start brand new, right? And uh what's the effect of that? Then uh we start from a first step. We'll never get back, uh go forward into a final step. So, you know, that economic development plan that we have in twenty twenty and that will sunset this May of twenty twenty five, uh looking at your report, I saw a vacuum. And hopefully you can enlighten me on this one, right? Uh one is uh what kind of implementation uh did we do as a city uh on the onset of the May, of the twenty twenty economic plan? And now we're talking about a new plan and strategy uh that will start uh early on, uh that will include on the budget hearing, right? You showed us indicators, and uh what I didn't see as an indicator is comparison. We are only comparing ourselves to what we have been on prior years, but we haven't compared ourselves as far as per but we haven't compared ourselves as far as financial performance is concerned with neighboring cities that we have. And I believe, I'm not a financial expert, but a litmus, a test for how we go about with our finances, right? Revenues should be not only to compare what we have done last year or five years ago and keep blaming it on the COVID, but also see our neighboring cities, how they are going about. So the question is, so what did we do? What implementation did you, did we do? And you believe had an effect of where we are now on, you know, on our charts, right? So you, you showed top revenue, tax revenue by type, you know, where we're failing. And, you know, I think I heard, hey, the year is not over yet. We cannot generate three million deficiency of the sales tax in one month. If you look at the averages, right? TOT, we barely made point two of a million from last year. So either we're not doing anything or we have not executed the plan that we had in place in twenty twenty. I, I get it, right? Pandemic hit and everything, you know, dropped to, to an imaginable unprecedented drop of the finances. But where we are in that, if we keep on saying, okay, this is what happened before, this is the reason why. But what measures, what I was anticipating to be, to be shown, at least to the community, is what were those things that were done, not indicators? We have macro, we have micro indicators, but we're only indicating to ourselves, correct me, right? I don't know what Santa Clara has done in the same chart as, as we showed, but I know what we have done and how our finances performed two, three years ago. And now we're talking about doing another plan. Plan that we will execute or plan that we will revise again in five years and, and, and show us indicators again. I think the real indicator is here in comparison with similar cities. Sales tax, why? Why is it? Why is it not, not our top producer, right? It is unusual. I am not an expert in finances, but it's unusual that you generate most of your revenues from property tax. It's always sales or TOT taxes. The question is, why are we lagging? Is the twenty twenty plan not working? Were we not innovative enough to react to, to situations and, and we're having this result? So those are the questions. Second question. I've heard you, Alex, several times. You have insisted to preserve employment land. So maybe my question and suggestion is, what does your, how does your office work with planning, with people, with department that reasons land? You know, I've, I've been crying about that, remember? Hey, stop converting industrial or stop converting commercial into residential zones. We, as, as your department, as my suggestion, should have a say. You've been saying it in the podium, should have a say when they make decisions to, to reclassify zones that would convert a certain zone into something that would take away employment lands as, as we're saying, right? What are, what is our employment lands percentage healthy? That is a question. Keep saying, we need to preserve them, we need to attract businesses. But the question is, are they healthy? Did, did we have a proportionate percentage of employment lands so to generate what we are strategically planning? Inviting investors. Are we receptive to the new type, right? Like AI, right? Like technology? Do we have enough space to cater for them? I think that that's something. And you know, the, the the top four sales tax generating, you divided it into four, I think the Milpitas, the specific plan, the gateway, the southern and the central. Where are we in statistics over the last five years as we implemented the economic development strategies on those five areas? I think that that's what we, what the people wants to see, you know? We have, we have these programs, we have these strategies. We have identified the top four sales tax producers. What's not working? And I, I haven't seen that on the presentation. All I see is, you know, it's barely making it. And, and, and what's, what's there to do?
May I respond?
Right.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Barbara Dio. Those are all excellent points. As it relates to sales tax, we have a contract with HDL as a sales tax consultant, and we actually do have some comparison between Milpitas and nearby cities. It is considered confidential. We can work with our finance director, figure out how we may be able to share that. So we do have some of that information. The reason it's not shared here today is because it's considered confidential.
Maybe you can share this. Are we the same? At least are we similar? Are we on the bandwagon of not improving sales tax, not improving TOT? Because if you, I, I think that's enough information. If you tell me two, three cities around Milpitas are the same and they have the same factors why they are performing the same, then I get it, right? Are we, are we the same on, on, on the area? Because if it's not, they're zooming and we're not, something's wrong.
Yeah. Yeah, our finance director will respond to that.
Good evening, council member. Thank you for the question, Councilmember, Councilmember Barbara Dio. What we can do is confer with our sales tax consultant. We want to be really careful about sales tax numbers. We are obliged by the state of California to maintain some level of confidentiality. So we tend to produce material for you that's aggregated. That's what you saw earlier when you saw the top twenty-five, I believe. And so what we can do is just ask them to provide us, you've given us a great, great question. You can provide them some guidance, a scope of work around that particular question and see what they can produce. But I do want to once again say that it will be aggregated. We can't point to a particular individual organization or company.
All right, maybe I misspoke or, you know, it's, it's too specific. What I'm saying is, let's say, you know, what's, what's the new theme song now? Are we on a bandwagon on, 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 on growth? I'm not, okay, I, I will not ask what specific city, but are we in a the same bandwagon as other cities financially with regards to TOT, with regards to sales tax, with regards to property tax? Because if, if at least we, we, we know, right, without disclosing any confidentiality, we know that hey, this is the trend, then maybe our strategies are working. But you know, if this is a trend for ten cities and one is lagging, then maybe there's something that needs improvement with regards to our strategies and plan. So that, that's the information I'm, I'm trying to, to ask.
What we can do is compare percentages. For example, we could look at Gilroy and say, what percentage of your revenues is sales tax? What percentage of our revenues is sales tax? But once again, we do need to look at that in more detail and dig more into. We'd also have to say what percentages of your business are generating sales tax. So it's not as easy, we could give you sort of very surface numbers and do that sort of comparison. It's a comparison of percentages because that's over a common denominator. And we can provide that and then let's look at that and see if that gives us sufficient detail to see if we can compare trends, but that's going to take a bit.
But we haven't done it. So we, we are comparing ourselves to our, our prior selves.
We have some comparison information, yes, that we have not been able to share on sales tax.
The city manager wanted to say a few words.
Yeah, Councilmember Barbara Dio, and maybe for Finance Director. I'm wondering if we could work with HDL to identify some benchmark cities that are of similar size and maybe similar makeup, maybe across the state, and it might be four or five of those. And then we would compare, and it might, they may be named or not named, but at least it would be benchmark cities that we could look at to compare. I think that's what you're asking is comparing the trend among the cities, yeah.
We're safer, right?
That was the, my intention, to go back to our sales tax consultant. Because they can look broader, because we also not, it's not just about size of population. It also, we want to be able to be close to equating what we look like. How much industrial land we have, how much commercial, how much residential. So we want someone that looks, that our portfolios look similar. And that would require, that may not be Gilroy. So let us put something in front of HDL and see what they can do for looking at many, many, thank you, thank you, City Manager Thomas. So, so we will, we will certainly broaden our look.
Well, I am surprised it's not presented today because as I said, you know, we have comparison. We are all in furies now, we're showing the figures, but we, we don't know if the strategies are working. We don't have any indication of that. So I believe what, what is good is to say, you know, you survey the, the, the seven cities in the county and see if, not necessarily which one, see if the trend for TOT taxes are rising and, and on our own graph, it's lagging or, you know, it's the same. So we have an idea. Hey, it's something that it's global, it's something that's be, within the, the seven cities. Probably we need improvement or strategies. That's the information I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, to see, to determine if we're doing the right things. You presented us with strategic plan. We're gonna plan again. Since it sunsets in May, you showed us the graph in, from the beginning to the end, but we didn't know and, and it's hard to, to, to determine what transpired in between those five years, the five years. Is there something working?
Last Thursday and Friday, the Office of Economic Development and other staff members participated in the SVITA conference, which is, which stands for the Silicon Valley Economic Development Alliance. And there was a speaker with Cosmont Company. His name's Ken Hera. And he actually had a slide that I took a photo of that does have comparisons between property tax, sales tax, and TOT. Now, I would share that, but I wanted to make sure to share this information with our finance director before we make that public because it's coming from a different source and I would like to verify it. I could share with you just comparison quickly if you're interested.
All right. It's public information, we can share it, there's no issue.
Right. Don't share it, but hypothetically, what's ideal to be the top revenue source for a city? Is it property tax? Generally speaking, is it sales tax or is it TOT tax?
Well, if I may, there is a level of distortion in California and also in Silicon Valley simply because when you have state regulations that cap property tax and the growth of property tax. Plus you also have singularly high values in California, especially in Silicon Valley. Sir, I, I understand the question, but I'd actually have to look a little bit more into it because the property taxes here that we garner are similar to states like Virginia and New York in the sense of percentages because the property values are so high. Property values are fairly steady because they have those caps of growth. And because there's not a lot of opportunity, the only way that we get a serious bump in property tax is if there's some transitions, it goes from one owner to another and their assessment is updated. Sales tax, however, is, is highly volatile. As, as Director Andrade had said, it is dependent wholly on the economy to some extent. And also on consumer confidence, as you can see by the graph that was presented before. Then you have the same thing with TOT. TOT is going to take a long time to recover. And we still have people working at home and they quite like it. And even with these return to offices mandates that are coming, the resistance is still there. So we are expecting to see TOT come back. But twenty twenty-six, I think, is the earliest. And overall, the hospitality industry and tourism industry is suffering everywhere. It's national, you know, so. But what we can do, I want to thank you for the direction you've provided. So when we come back to you during the budget process regarding the study, we can look at some of these things that you've talked about.
Right. And, and lastly, you know, I think that's important because it's, will later on be a policy considerations, right? When we have those data, we have the, the region's help with regards to this, those three sources. Then for policy considerations, maybe, you know, economic development will say, okay, let's slow down with residential or conversion because the projection is this, we need more employment lands and let's preserve it that way. So, you know, it, it trickles, I mean, it, it doubles to a higher a policy consideration if we have all this information. And at the same time, you know, we've, we check the, our, our financial health.
Those are all great thoughts. Yes, we're going to come back to you all with more information. I think we are limited with the data that we currently have, and you're absolutely right. Our comparisons are basic at this point in time. As time continues, we'll be able to have more comparisons, not just internally, but beyond our city. I think that's important. We do have some of that information. I'm holding some information that's really important here, which I will share, not now, but another time.
Okay.
I do think it's important to respond. The Office of Economic Development and Planning Department work very closely together. But throughout the week, we're, it, it's likely the, the department that Office of Economic Development works closest with. And so we have a great relationship. I think that the conversation about preserving and protecting employment lands goes beyond staff. Sometimes that becomes a political conversation. And it's a decision that, that planning, the planning commission and city council gets a chance to make.
Oh, just provide us with objective facts and, you know, each and every able vote will, will be objective.
Also, thank you for that. I, I was very limited in the accomplishments section here. We could provide more accomplishments. The one challenge that I would say is, which is true for all economic development professionals, to try to create a, an economic value to each task. Like somebody in our development services and planning or building, they go through their review process of the applications. And at the end of that process, there's a permit. With economic development, it's not so clear as to the value that the Office of Economic Development provides. However, we are having internal conversations about trying to devise some sort of methodology to be able to, to share that with you and the community.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, we have a Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Chua.
Just briefly, I think the matrix that you're going to, to show us, the comparison on the trends from twenty twenty to current, I think that would be a good matrix to see how successful the plan was. I think that would help. I also want to interject that I, I was at the library commission meeting last night and there was a request through one of the commissioners to, to add another service point for library here in Milpitas. But we found out last night that the, the level of attendance to our library before the pandemic and now it has not recovered. It's still low. The, so the impact of the pandemic is still there. And that's evident with attendance of, and it's true to all the cities in Santa Clara County. I just want to share it out with everybody.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chua. You reminded me of something that I didn't mention earlier that has to do with our business license list. Before the pandemic, we were roughly around six thousand businesses, as I mentioned earlier. And to our very pleasant surprise, in the last week or so, we learned that we, we actually have a few more business licenses. So we were able to weather the pandemic pretty well. And I'm pretty sure there's some component of our business attraction and expansion and retention efforts. And I'm pretty sure there's some component of our business attraction and expansion and retention efforts that had something to do with that. We should be proud of that. Um, but I agree, we have a lot more work to do as it relates to. Uh, statistics that not only tell the story, but um help us plan for the future.
Data does not lie. Do you see what I'm saying? It will prove itself. Okay, thank you. And thank you very much, everybody, for the feedback.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else want to make any more comments? Uh, I have a couple. Okay, so, you know, economic development really means bringing in revenue for our city. So we can provide services, you know, roads, uh, public safety. And that's the bottom line, is you know, bringing, bringing re- revenue in. Uh, and you mentioned that Economic Development Department is there to maintain the existing businesses, make sure that they get what they need. Um, and what was the other?
We do business attraction, retention and expansion.
Yeah, that's those three things. So I think uh for me, I think we need more business attraction. And you mentioned about the business licenses uh more coming in. And I'll tell you, it's because people want to move, they want, they like Milpitas, they, you know. Our average income is a hundred and fifty thousand per, you know, per year. So. That's, that's no wonder people want to move in because we have a, a pretty high income compared to other cities. Um, our size. So. To me, that's where we really need to focus is to start bringing in more businesses uh for those three elements that you mentioned. Um. The other thing is, uh, I think we should need to start thinking out of the box, you know, it's all about ideas, how to bring in more revenue. Uh, we have brought this up before and that means uh leasing out empty buildings that we don't use and that was one of the vice mayor's um. Uh, ideas. Uh. And I do love the Innovation District. I think that's going to bring in a lot of revenue. The, and we do need to concentrate on streamlining, really making it a business friendly because I, I'm telling you, I hear so many complaints and I'm not the only one. So that's the, that's a big, that's a big problem and we need to figure out a way how to streamline. Um, and you've already told me about the permit navigator, so that's, that's good that it's working out. Um. Sweet, I think we need to think about incentives. We need to start thinking about out of the box ideas, be creative. We need to give incentives for some of these businesses. I know that Mayor Matt Mahan from the City of San Jose. Uh, was giving out some kind of incentives, um. Thinking that. Waivers or something, I'm not sure, but he did give out to, because you know, their downtown is really hurting right now, so. So they're trying to get more businesses in. So I think we need, we need to start doing that, giving incentives. Um. The T O T, we saw that it was really low. You know, but I, and it goes back to the creative ideas, you know, I was at the uh San Jose International Airport. And I saw that they have, um, they, what they do is they market their hotels and I'm thinking, why, why aren't we marketing our hotels? Why aren't, why don't we have? Um, you know, you know how they have those little pamphlets, you know, why, why aren't we doing that? What? Or why aren't we putting it on the um, on the um, you know, we get the, the, we get that clear, clear channel. So, you know, we should start, we have to put something in to get something out. You see what I'm saying? And so that's why I'm thinking we need to start thinking about creative, being creative. And um invest in to get something in return. Uh, I also Main Street, we're trying, you know, all, all, each and every one of these council members wants to develop Main Street. We should uh think about making it an entertainment district so we can. Um, you know, make it so that way more businesses will want to come into that area. So. And I just think we just need to start thinking out of the box and be more, come up with some creative ideas, how to. Help our businesses and attract more businesses. So that's, to me, that's really important. So with that, um, this is just an information item, so.
Can I just respond quickly to a couple of those items if, if it's okay?
I'm sorry?
May I respond to a couple of those items? Yeah, so just briefly here, in terms of business attraction. Uh, Finance Director Kofresi Howe and I have a meeting tomorrow afternoon with a company that we have been working with. And I can't share a lot of information at this point in time because we haven't entered formally into negotiations. But if that uh result. It results in this company coming to the city, it not only would bring in a pretty high profile business, but sales tax revenues. We will be approaching the city council soon if that moves forward. Also did want to mention that the City Manager's Office and our, and Charmaine Angelo, our P I O. Are working on a really fun pamphlet that would be used perhaps in places like the airport. And you and I have talked about utilizing some digital displays at the airport and. Our agenda report talks about ensuring that we work with our hotels and our restaurants as it relates to the twenty twenty six. Super Bowl as well as the six FIFA World Cup games that are scheduled for the summer of twenty twenty six. And each one of those games would be the equivalent of one Super Bowl. So we are uh thinking creatively, we'll, we'll come to city council with more information as that develops.
Great, yeah, but you know, we have um, we have so many destination places. We have the Alvisa Adobe, Higera Adobe, we have. A Big Dog Winery, we have the Great Mall, we have so many things, but yet we're not. We're not uh giving out that information and people need to know the Milpitas has a lot to offer, so. So thank you for that and I think that's it, right? Because this is just information only, right?
We still need to take public comment. We still need to take public comment.
Okay, so I thought we already did that. Okay, public comment open.
Uh, we have a card from Michael Sai. And then followed by Voltaire Montemayor. Welcome.
A good evening, everyone. Uh, I think that was a very uh long but meaningful discussion. Um. First off, I do want to say I've known Alex Andrade for years. Um, he's competent and I want to say more importantly ethical. I have seen times where uh some ethically questionable people tried to approach him and tried to rope him into some stuff. And he told them in no uncertain terms that they could buzz off. So this is just exactly the sort of ethical person that we can trust to lead economic development. Um, and you know, there's, there's some tough questions. Um, I did have the privilege of speaking with Mayor Montano. A few months ago about uh the artificial intelligence future and how we can prepare for that. I think this is an unprecedented. Challenge as well as opportunity for us to enter Milpitas two point O and really think out of the box for solutions for economic growth. Revitalization and attracting businesses. I think, you know, also Gary's questions about uh the proportion of uh sales tax revenue versus property tax revenue is, is also legitimate. Um, and I think we, we can get those sales tax numbers up and that begins with. Uh, building the foundations for the future artificial intelligence economy. Uh, the more businesses we attract, uh, those businesses are going to make money, those employees are going to spend money. I think we can incentivize them to spend the money here locally and boost that sales tax. Um, and I do work with a number of artificial intelligence startups, so uh we can host the panel or. Uh, bring them in and get a good discussion. I can share what sort of things that they are looking for in deciding for a place to move to. Uh, and really put Milpitas on the map for it. We do have a history of technological development that's underappreciated and I think we can. Really build on that, that's, there's hidden potential here. Hmm, I think first off, we don't have much time here, but I want to say that. Even though I didn't run for council this time around, I do have an economic development plan that I formulated for it, that I'm willing to share with. Um, this government. Um, and advise and brief folks who are interested. I think we really need to focus on upgrading our energy grid and infrastructure because one of the things that people don't understand about artificial intelligence is that it requires a lot of energy. I think the energy um efficient, the energy smart cities that are ahead of the other cities, they're going to stand out from the pack. In terms of where these businesses want to move to, so uh that's an insight I think we can act on. Um, and secondly, some businesses. You know, may, maybe they're gonna slowly um not do so well in the age of artificial intelligence. So we need to help manage that transition as well and bet on the ones that are going to grow from these new technologies. Um, again, I think we, we have both huge challenges and huge opportunities ahead of us and I'm ready to support our city through all that.
Thank you, Michael, for the information and, and just to, just an FYI, uh, so Alex has been working with P G N E. Because yeah, it, they, those. AI uh data centers, they need a lot of energy, so. Thank you for that. Okay. So now, um, anymore, oh, Montemayor, go ahead.
Thank you, just follow up for the previous speaker. Yeah, um, we need attraction, we need more business, at least we have a. Uh, the more business in a place is more revenues. Now, in comparison to the sales stocks, I don't know if this included. We didn't have, we don't have Costco, I'm not saying we're gonna compete Walmart. We don't have airport, we don't have Oracle, we don't have Great America. We didn't have Niners, hmm, and more. Uh, we have, we will have Eleven, we will have P R T all over. And that will be a big project also, so. Uh, comparing to uh Gilroy and Milpitas, they have the area, we don't have the area, but we have industrial and commercial. So in other words, um. We still are sitting on a pot of gold. We could improve, we could improve fast if we team up good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there anyone else?
I have no additional public speaker cards.
Anyone from the public? Okay, Mr. Magla Lang. Ray Magla Lang. Just come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I just want to um, um, reiterate what Mayor Montano said about the Midtown specific plan. The Main Street. You know, from the day I lived here, I was really dreaming of having a downtown and part of that is Main Street. We should, to me, I would rather put more. Strategic development planning of Midtown specific plan, how we can develop. How we can attract businesses to do business. The only development I saw there before was the. The street lights, which is attractive, especially during. Um, Independence Day, Christmas, there are a lot of decoration in the street, it's more attractive. But I prefer Midtown specific plan will be a walking friendly business purchasing. So I think we should separate doing strategic planning on this. That's all I have, thank you. And please. I am daydreaming in this. I'd like to do it before I go to sleep. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Miss, thank you, Ray. Thank you, Ray. Yeah, you're right, it's, it's about investing. Where you invest is where you're gonna get, what you put in is what you get out, so you're, we're absolutely right. So let's have Dexter come on up.
Hi, City Mayor, um, Honorable City Council. I've been in real estate for over twenty years and I wanted to actually have some information that can help, uh. Uh, Alex, Alex here. What I'm seeing in the trenches, I have a lot of real estate broker friends in terms of the. Real estate mixes in the commercial industry. So right now, office and retail are really low on the. A lot of my business partners can't sell it, can't lease it and stuff. So I think there should be some plan. For you to look at and then the work from home is also affecting office as much as possible. There should be some plan in the future regarding that mix of what you're gonna use because if property tax is your biggest revenue. That's gonna change because of what's happening in the industry. Um, a lot of people are converting a lot of offices in other cities. To other uses that are used instead of remaining vacant and uh. And the buildings are not generating any revenue, so they're converting it so it can generate revenue for the city. So that's something that I think you should also study is the mixture of. The different commercial properties that the city has, so I just wanted to add that on.
Thank you, Dexter, and you're absolutely right. Uh, V T A just uh decided to buy some commercial prob- property that was like a steal. If they didn't do it now to buy the property, it's because the commercial. Industry is really low and right now a lot of, they're selling it for dirt or, yeah, dirt cheap. Anyway, thanks for that. Um, okay, I don't see anybody else, so let's move on. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. So now it's time for announcements and future agenda items. Uh, do we have any city manager, any announcements?
Have no announcements tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Any council members have any announcements? We have a Vice Mayor Chua.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two. Uh, number one is a study of this time really. Seriously, we really need into, to look into this, the study of uh analysis of the permit process. And I would like to jumpstart that because I have, I have some documentation if I could meet with. The executive team that gets the ball rolling, then uh that would be good. So. Can we get a?
Yeah, we'll just get a consensus, start. Councilmember Barbara Dio.
I agree.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
Aye.
And number two, I would like to bring back this, I brought this up in twenty twenty one. I would like to bring back the, the job fair for all the openings in our city. To open it up to everybody and I, uh, Nick has some good ideas at that time. But we never really addressed this. I think it's time that we do because we have lots of opening and we want to encourage the. Residents of Milpitas to be part of the process. It's a job fair.
Break consensus, Councilmember Barbara Dio.
I'm okay with that.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm not. Okay, anyone else? We have a. We have cons- uh, Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank um, Milpines for the vote on Measure J. Um. It is needed and we pass it with a, with an overwhelmingly rate, yeah, so thank you so much.
Thank you, anyone else? We have a council member, Barbara Dio.
Yes, I just wanted to uh follow up on uh that direction I believe that we had uh with regards to uh the. Cost and naming of uh the library. Uh, we, I believe if I remember it right, we said that uh it's going to uh be back uh after uh the election. So that, that's my request.
Okay. Consensus?
Yes, we're currently working on that. I know that we've gotten some cost estimates um for different levels. Um, there are. We've identified three different areas where the sign, there are, there's outdoor signage at the library. And depending on where the signs are, are adjusted, there's different costs that are involved. And I'm not sure, Matt, do you know the, the schedule that we have for bringing that back to the council? I don't know if we've. If we're far enough along that we have something that we would bring back to them.
Matt, can you know, Assistant City Manager, we, we are tracking towards bringing that back in December.
December, okay. So, so uh I, I do want to disclose that I did speak to uh. Former Mayor Jose Estevez and he, he just wanted to make sure that we, that we're not creating all new verbiage. It's, it should be the same so to keep it as reasonable, the cost as reasonable, low as possible. So just wanted to put that out there. Um, anybody else? So I do have one, I just, I would like, uh, you know, we just had Great Mall Parkway paved and it looks really nice. However, we have the. Transporters of the Tesla because of that uh yard. And there, I, I'm afraid that after so many years of wear and tear on the road. Then we should look into some type of impact fees because uh we just had the Great Mall repaved and. It's, you know, the, they carry like every, I think every ten minutes I see the transporters and they carry about. Seven or eight cars and those Teslas are really heavy. And I'm afraid that it's going to destroy our streets before, I think the average time is about twenty years for. Who, who would know, twenty years for a road, twenty, thirty years, and I'm afraid that that's gonna. Uh, they'll get ruined before that time, so if you can look into that, some type of impact fees. For road um usage from the heavy transporters of the vehicles. No consensus?
For consensus, Councilmember Barbara Dio.
I agree with that.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Hi.
Councilmember Leanne.
Sure, hi.
Councilmember Fan.
I have no idea what you just said, uh, nay.
Mayor Montano.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, okay, now we're going to adjourn the meeting, thank you. Name's adjourned. What an ass one.